Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the instructional subcommittee meeting for the Farmer's School Committee for Monday, January 25th to order, now the secretary, would you please take the role?
Mr. Ida?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Would you all please join me for a salute to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In keeping with National law, chapter 30A, section 20E, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Next topic for today's meeting is citizens' input. We did have one submission by Mr. Colin Dias from 560 Ray Street. Unfortunately, in keeping with the public comment that school committee policy, BEDH, the chair has ruled that that commentary is out of order based on number four, improper comments, remarks will not be allowed, the form of mandatory, abusive remarks are always out of order. If the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate the individual's privilege of address. And also, under number five, speakers may offer objective criticisms or concerns regarding school operations or programs, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or against any member of the school community. Administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. The first order for discussion on today's agenda is a discussion and vote to refer DIRFEE program of studies. I'll get to open it up for brief presentations and discussion. This time, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Maria Potts to walk us through some of it. I know we're joined by Principal Demaris and some of his staff, department heads from DIRFEE. Welcome all. I see you all, I see some of you on the screen there. Ms. Francisco, welcome. Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Madares, Mr. Sekul, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Manaco, Mr. Costa, Ms. Saunders, and Ms. Souza, welcome. Opened all of you. Ms. Potts?
Good afternoon. So today, this afternoon, we have the DIRFEE team. I would like to recognize them for their diligent work in revising their program of studies, really going through the program of studies with a fine-tooth comb and streamlining it, creating a program of studies that was inclusive and really well-thought-out, thinking of all the students that they serve, and how they can create coursework that addresses all the needs of our students. So, I'm really going to turn it over to the DIRFEE team, but they have done an outstanding job in creating this new document that really is much more user-friendly, I would say, and much more inclusive. So, Mr. Demaris and DIRFEE team, have at it.
Welcome, Mrs. Demaris.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Happy to be here, and I thank my team for being here. If we get down to some department-specific questions, they're on call for us. You know, the program of studies is always a living document, and year to year, it changes. The changes that you see in front of you this year are more formatic, right? If that's the right word, right? In that, we had a very large, cumbersome document that didn't read as if it had one voice, that had a lot of extra stuff in there that was maybe more appropriate for the student handbook. And so, when we looked at other examples of programs of study, we took those into consult, and I think we produced a document that's very user-friendly. So, what we did at the start is we kind of tore down the document itself and created a database of all our courses, and Shayna Morgan was the driving force behind that work. So now, we have a database of every course at DIRFEE High School that we can manipulate and present in a variety of formats. Then, I asked the department heads and the deans to look at their course descriptions and to take out a lot of the language that was really unnecessary in there, like in a course of studies program, you write "this course is," well, that's kind of redundant. So, let's have it be accessible, and let's have it be user-friendly, and then let's have it read as if it has one voice. And I think we came pretty close to achieving that, if we haven't. Certainly, you know, with a revamp of a document of this size, there's an opportunity for some mistakes to be made, and we've edited and we've gone back over, but we appreciate any feedback in that way, too, in case we miss something. When we look at changes, we proposed some changes last year that we weren't necessarily able to execute this year because of the conditions. So, those remain in the program of studies, and we hope that everything is at a spot for next year where we can bring those into play. And then, on the executive summary itself, we're sharing with you some organizing principles, you know, consistency and clarity of the document so that it reads as one document, right? And a focus on student achievement and accountability in that when we look at how we're judged by the state, right? We want to build into our program of studies the supports and the development of programs that support movement towards, you know, a school that's not going to be considered underperforming. So, when you look at enhancements for ESL services, and you look at opportunities for students of all walks of life to access upper-level coursework, we've built pathways into the program of studies that will get the kids there. In addition to that, we're shifting our focus to be fully inclusive, right? We need to be a fully inclusive school. We always need to be prepared for when students struggle and don't do well throughout, and then as a final outcome. But, I felt as though we were planning for failure too often by including courses like credit recovery in the program of studies. There'll always be a need for students to recover credit, but we need to push the thinking in the community within the school walls to intervening in real-time to prevent more failures, to give the kids the skills and the confidence they need to pass courses the first time around. So, we're always going to have flexibility to put kids in courses when things fall apart, okay? But, on the front end of it, we're planning that every kid's going to succeed, and we're going to build in the necessary structures by way of intervention. We're expanding our early college and CTE programming, and I think that, you know, hits a variety of learners, right? In that, we're boosting up our programs with BCC and BSU, so that right now, I think we have between 80 and 100 kids involved this year, and we're looking to push that further. When we're talking about CTE programming, we're always looking to increase enrollment there, but now that we have an opportunity to develop an after-doc program, we see that we not only may be able to hook some kids back into school, but also provide opportunities for students where the CTE stuff couldn't fit within their day schedule. And then, expanding a curriculum that reflects the diversity of our student body and one that personalizes learning. So, when we're looking at some new courses, you want to highlight global citizenship, we have the capacity to introduce Arabic as a world language, African-American Studies is a new course coming online, Latino Studies, Music from Around the World, LGBTQ Studies, Spanish Cultural Acquisition, and AP Human Geography. In its pilot year in particular, that course, we're finding that there's some interest, actually, this is the second year. We had some really good success on the first year of the course. And when we look at Project Red and Black and that personalization piece, now, this year's a little different, and I don't have any of the transformative stories that I could have shared from last year's crop, okay? It's a little different this year, right? But, that project, we're committed to because it was building, where it went from a pilot to by year three, there were 100 kids in the program and more asking for it this year. Couldn't quite deliver it, okay? But, we're going to keep pushing that forward. As, you know, as we build towards some kind of requirement of a senior project or a service requirement for all students, I see this as the hub for that. And, you know, the steps that are being made at the middle level with the project, I mean, with a Generation Citizen, I think the idea of civics and serving one's community is going to be deeply embedded into the flow of our public schools, and soon will be the time for us to add that kind of capstone piece to it. So, beyond that, there would be very specific adjustments within the executive summary by department, that certainly we could open up questions on that. But, generally speaking, I am proud of this document. I'm proud of the work that my team did, because it was a collaborative team effort on all fronts.
Thank you, Mr. Demaris. I think what I would do, I don't want to put any one of your department heads on the spot, you know, looking up there, I know all the faces, most of the faces, if not all of them, so certainly all capable and competent to discuss what's going on in their departments. But, I would give an opportunity, if any of them would like to just highlight some of the course selections that are going to be offered this year, that may not have been offered in previous years, and what the thought process was behind including them. If there's anything else you want to share with the subcommittee about your respective departments, I would certainly offer them an opportunity to do that, and then we'll open it up to questions from my colleagues here, and proceed in that fashion.
Okay, so, deans, directors, department heads, those of you that have new courses, if you look at the executive summary, if we go in the order there, I'd make it a little streamlined, so if we start at ELA, Dean Manaco.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having us.
Likewise.
On behalf of the English Department, I just want to echo what Principal Demaris opened with, and say that we're very excited to offer a streamlined document pool. Truly, for ELA, there aren't many changes. The big one to highlight is that we're adding Create-A-Two to our offerings next year. We're excited about that. Pre-AP One seems to be off to a great success so far, so happy to bring on its counterpart next year. In that lane, with that thinking in mind, we're trying to always grow our A-A sections and make sure that we're including more and more students every year. And so, we're happy to offer, so we can sell more AP-Lay, AP-Liv, and our dual enrollment class before. We decided to delete the literary seminar at this time, because we feel like with the inclusion of the wing blocks, we will be able to support our students' needs better with that model. I don't know if I should add anything, Principal Demaris, but I think it's all set for ELA.
I think you covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll run along. Math and Computer Science, I believe that's Mr. Sekul.
That's me. Just a couple of things that we changed for the Algebra One on, we're going to change that to the Pre-AP. I guess that was in the plan all along, but I had talked to Jeff, and I talked to Jen about how that was going in their department, and they said it was going well. So, then I talked to the AP people and the Department of Technology Board, and I'm going to meet up with them, like, and learn more about the Pre-AP, but it just seemed like the right way to go, who was moving that way, for us to move in the same direction of the math department. And another change we moved with that we took out the AP Computer Science Principles class, and we are going to go with the Project Lead-Away Computer Science Principles class, and we did that for two reasons. One, we felt like that we were going to have students competing between these two classes, they really do the same thing, and so, we would end up with two classes that weren't full, where it would be just going kids competing. So, then I called Project Lead-Away to clarify something, that any kid can take the class, and if the kid decides they want to take the AP exam, this class set them up, and this redesigned last year, we set them up to take the AP exam, and the syllabus for it, we uploaded, so it's a nice class, but we can have kids in it who want honors credit, you can have kids in it who want AP credit, but they're all living within Project Lead-Away class. And I think the second reason I wanted to do that was because I think after coming up from elementary and middle, and with an understanding of what Project Lead-Away is, and I think the pathway would just lead them right into all Project Lead-Away classes here at the high school, which will now lead them into a Project Lead-Away class that will also give them OP credit. So, I thought the threat there of putting more, well, is the best way to break it all, was to be a comfort level for the fifth grade of that class. And the last thing we did, Mr. Demaris, everybody talked about it, we looked at some of the classes we offered, and wondered if the word review built into them, and my philosophy with the famous is, we just need to do a better job while the kids in class the first time, and we need to work on interventions happening in class, and with our schedule having a wing block, good opportunity for us to catch the kids a lot through, so we have new classes, and we can just have more classes that kids can take the first time around the class. That's about my little spiel for that.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Sekul. I'm going to go through the whole department and then.
In the order.
Yeah.
Okay. I just got to share some good news from around math here for a second. Today, I learned from the College Board that we were awarded the Female Diversity Award for achieving high female representation in both AP Computer Science A and AP Computer Science Principles, and we were one of 56 schools in the country to receive that today.
Outstanding. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
I believe we have science next, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that, Ms. Saunders?
Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon.
You're.
You're muted.
Yeah. She had some dental work today, so it's going to be tough.
Good afternoon, yes. Here with me, I had a tooth extracted this afternoon.
Say no more.
I did.
Say no more, Ms. Saunders. Say no more. We have it before us. Just hang tight. I appreciate.
I do just want to share two very big things that I'm proud of. We have Pre-AP Biology for freshmen incoming freshmen, and just most recently, we've also got Pre-Ap Chemistry for our upper classes.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. We appreciate you toughening it out with us. Next one is Social Studies. Mr. Costa, welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited about a lot of the work that's being done in our department. There's been a lot of fully topical issues, and real-world things that are going on in our country today, that ongoing conversations in our classrooms, and there's a lot of innovative and progressive lessons that teachers are doing, and we're having really great conversations, you know, around looking at the world and, you know, looking at the civic lens. So, this is, we piloted our studies project last year. We also partnered with Generation Citizen, and they have worked with us this year. We're looking at pulling in our financial literacy component with our civic component and our senior history course, so it's a very applicable and practical course for our seniors that culminates in the studies project, looking at how students kind of make their footprint in our society, so we're continuing to work with that, and I'm really happy with the progress that's going on with that. Two new additions next year, we're adding Create-A-Two our freshman world to, you know, link up with everyone else's approach, and going along with what Mr. Sekul, talking to Ms. Saunders and Ms. Manaco about their early implementation of it, it sounded like it's very positive to, you know, put those materials together and have some significance across the freshman world. Also, adding African-American Studies, we're looking to celebrate a lot of the Black History that happens in our country, and also add a civic service learning component to that as well. So, we're really excited about that. That was long overdue, and we're ready to add that to our program of studies. As far as the deletions go, Demaris has talked about the credit recovery, we're taking those away, you know, hoping to build in more credit for classes. So, took away some, we're able to like, to make it a world that we're living right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Multilingual learners, and I'm going to botch this, but I'm going to say, Ms. Souza?
Close.
Is that correct? Has that heard the part?
Word language.
Ms. Word Language? Mr. McCarthy.
Oh, boy.
Yep. Here's the Mickey Mouse thingo.
Mr. McCarthy, I think you're muted. While you're doing that, Mr. McCarthy, we'll move on. We'll go to Fine Arts. Mrs. Francisco, please.
We only have one course, it is music for the world.
Arabic.
It's, people, back on your end. But, it's a course elective that really brings together cultural music that we haven't really been able to deliver at an elective level before. So, it's for any student that wishes to take the course, it will check off the box in terms of the requirement for an arts elective for graduation requirements, and we believe we're going to map together that takes kids around the world, look at different types of music, whether wooden brass, percussion, or vocal, very cool stuff. And we're piloting it with kids right now, kind of getting a feel for how it's working with kids.
Thank you. Let's see. How we doing with audio, Mr. McCarthy?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
All right, perfect. Yeah, I just had to update the input. Anyway, as I was about to say, we're finally a standalone department this year, which spun off from Word Language, and who's it for, leaders, fire too, and we'll learn from these services, 460 ESL students at DIRFEE High School. And as far as adding new classes this year, and adding new classes per se, however, I met with our head of guidance, Mr. Woodward, and we are going to be looking at offering increasing seat time for our lower-level students. So, we're looking at covering up the schedule in order to get more time in classroom learning English for the lower-level ESL Tier B students. The current ESL Tier A students already have a double block out at their name doing EFL class, and we wanted to continue that offer for the Tier B students for the following year. So, we're excited about that.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. You got help in the dead?
Me.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Thank you. For our department, we have two additions that we have added, and of course, in Health and the Dead, we're always looking for ways to connect with students, find things that interest them, that make them want to be moving, and make them want to make that part of their life. So, last year, we had brought in the Walking for Fitness, and in doing that, and having a conversation with Mr. Woodward, we talked about basketball. Basketball is extremely popular with our students, and so, we decided to offer it as a full course. So, we're offering that where they can learn about basketball, the rules, also how to play, but also at the end, to be able to put their skills in play, and then be able to have tournament-type style. You know, we've always tried to see what is it that's going to get kids to move and to be healthy. So, another piece of that is, we want to highlight that beautiful, you know, fieldhouse in that pool that we have. So, in doing that, we're going to offer what has, actually, was in the past, we're bringing it back, which is aquatic sports and activities. So, we're going to have in the pool, but we're going to be playing team sports in the pool, and a few that might be out, but mainly in the pool itself. And we have a beautiful facility, and we want to make sure that we get all the kids, you know, up and moving, and we call this our reset year, because now, we're going into this new building, and it's a whole new ballgame. So, we're sitting down, and we're going over everything from, there's no food, everything has to be set up and ready to go. So, a lot of work there. I will say, in the Health Department, we have also, it's not new courses, but we're amending some of our offerings within our courses. We want to make sure that we are doing more with diversity and also addressing sexual orientation with LGBTQ.
Excellent. Thank you. CTE, Mr. Madares, welcome.
Sounds exciting.
Good afternoon. As far as CTE, there are no major changes in the program of studies. What we did do was to try to delineate for our nine pathways, internships that students might have an opportunity to partake in. So, whereas before, it might have said CTE internship, now it may say culinary internship. And a lot of times, those inter and externships are opportunities that pop up, we work under the school-to-career umbrella, and it's kind of like co-op kind of DIRFEE style. Whereas, we don't have that full block of a day or a week to do the internships, but we try to fit it within that schedule, three periods in the morning, construction, there's a student who will be going out for three periods in the afternoon, possibly to work for the city of Fall River. So, that will look differently on his transcript when we go forward with this, and something he can pick with him forever.
Thank you, Mr. Madares. I'm not taking any sleep, Mr. Demaris. Early college?
Sure, I can jump in on that. It's a project I'm very passionate about, and we've been piloting for several years here in Fall River, but we were excited to be announced by DESI and the Board of Piret as one of the six certified early college, new early college programs this past June, which means we're fully launched right now. We launched our first full early college pathway with the juniors. We have about 65 juniors enrolled. Our goal is to grow between 80 and 100. And really, the goal of the early college program is to really serve all of our students with a focus on some of the underserved populations enrolling and graduating from college, and also some of the students who might not be academically at the top at the time that we enrolled them in early college pathways. So, we build in a lot of concurrent academic support, both in the sophomore year before they start taking dual enrollment courses, and also concurrently, two days a week while they're enrolled in dual enrollment courses, both with Bristol and with Bridgewater State University. We have four career-aligned pathways, health science, business, education, and social service leadership, a pathway designed for students interested in giving back to the Fall River and surrounding communities.
Excellent. Thank you. I want to leave you all, Ms. Souza, and I apologize for botching your department earlier, but I want to give you an opportunity to share as well, if you'd like.
There are no new changes to Word Language.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, but we are excited about getting Arabic going for next year, so that's going to be awesome. If I could, if we could just entertain one more statement from Mrs. Morgan, I just want to have her kind of summarize and just add some things in terms of the whole vision here. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Welcome, Ms. Morgan.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to say a bit, just how great we've been working on this, this project. I think we've really put together the unified vision of, everything has made us take a step back and think of everything we need to be, for our students to be successful, the idea of inclusion, high expectations, all, and letting that in our program of studies. So, I feel like we're really good here, and really excited that I think we're going to make the change that this is making.
Thank you. We've got a new computer. So, at this time, I'll open up to my colleagues. Do you got any questions, or, Mr. Corey?
Some questions, some comments, Mr. Chair. I want to let everybody know I want my DIRFEE colors today, so, in honor of your presentation. Having spent so much of my career at DIRFEE High School, I'm well in tune with the program of studies, and the one thing that I'm impressed with is the team that put this program of studies together this year is a team of Shayna Morgan and Matt Demaris that have been at the helm for a real steady, long time, and they've had a chance to evaluate the entire school, department by department, and the fact that both of you served as department heads, you have a great inside look as to what your department heads are going to need moving into the future. I'm really, really pleased to hear, as you developed this program of studies, that you did so with the unified vision of growing the entire school, and it's an awesome-looking program of studies. And I know that as far as NCAS is concerned, some of the grades have been low, the school is in that fourth quadrant that we have to stay at risk with, but I have to say nothing but the best DIRFEE pride is shown through this wonderful program of studies, especially when it reflects what's going on multiculturally around the world. I'm very pleased to know that Arabic is a new inclusion in the studies program. And last week, I had long discussions with Mr. Costa on the telephone about what's been going on in our country. I was concerned at how the social studies department was looking at that, and he assured me that there's a great amount of discussion going on in classrooms for the good of our country moving forward, because kids need to have a vision as to what in the United States of America looks like in the 21st century, so that they could be healthy, active participants in our society moving forward. Very pleased with this. If you guys have any questions or needs for support moving forward, I encourage you to go through Matt, write to us, we'll do anything we can to help support you. Congratulations on a great program of studies. I yield, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on a great program of studies. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. You want to say again?
Just a couple of questions. The theme throughout was the pre-AP taking over for honors. And I, I can see what it says clearly here about not being an advanced course, but what is the difference in the course, you know, between those two?
The difference would be skill set. Skill set for success in AP course where tethered to success in college. So the curriculum, there won't be much change other than an insertion of skill development to be ready to succeed at the AP level.
So anybody that would have been normally in an honors would naturally, it's a natural progression and we're going to get credit for it more so than what it was, what I thought of. But it's not necessarily getting rid of anything. It's just changing the name, basically.
Changing the name and enhancing the course by really getting them ready for the AP level.
Right. Thank you. The, I had just ordered a couple of questions. It's the presentation. The After Dark, somewhere it says in here. And that was, I think, at one of our meetings. That's not up and running yet or is it? I think we talked about it after the supplement meeting, but is it COVID?
Yeah, we're, we're looking, that's a good question and that's another program that I'm really passionate about, the CTE After Dark. We are in our implementation phase for the Durfee RPA partnership for CTE After Dark. And we're planning to launch once we move, shift back to full hybrid in March. Mr. Maderas has been interviewing cosmetology and construction candidates. So we're almost locked down with the staffing and RPA has done a good job doing the recruitment, identifying students who are interested. So next we'll go into kind of an orientation, kind of getting students ready for the After Dark program because it is a commitment, especially in cosmetology. They need to get that a thousand hours in order to sit for the exam, which would take two years of a commitment. And then we're hoping to launch right in March, shortly after March 1st as we return.
Well, it sounded like a good program, but I figured what the, what we're going through is going to affect that. Along the same lines, early college said eighty to a hundred students per grade. Is that their older grades? Like when it says per grade, it's eleven and twelve, not, like ninth grade is not necessarily going to be in? Was there other classes or?
Sure. It's a, another good question. We, we're enrolling students in tenth grade. They won't be taking any college courses, but they will be in the early college program. We're hoping next year to have them go through an early, or a collaging career to elective course to build in some of the academic readiness skills and also work with them kind of intently on career exploration and build in some potential immersion experience during the tenth grade year so that once they're in eleventh grade and they're taking college courses, they're familiar with platforms and the colleges themselves and have the skills to be successful. So you're right, about eighty to a hundred students in eleventh and twelfth grade taking college courses with a tenth grade year being more of a readiness year.
And is that prohibit, do we prohibit, you know, really high functioning younger student? If they wanted to take a college course and it's available, is that an option or is that prohibited?
No, it is, it is an option.
Depends on where they're at.
Sure. They, I mean, accurate place to score, gains you entry into it. If it's a freshman and they're striving, we're going to support it.
So we're offering dual enrollment opportunities within the early college program and also outside of the early college program. This year, we've purchased a couple of courses through a CDEP grant that Bristol Community College was able to get sociology and humanities for the spring. The CTE Perkins is also funding seven or eight dual enrollment courses. And our, our partner is Trio with Bristol Community Colleges are also funding assigned language dual enrollment course. So there's various options for students at different academic levels and readiness to take dual enrollment courses.
Yeah, I was enjoying your, I had a question on, that I wrote on English and I waited till the end. So we're moving from the honors to the pre-AP, but have there been assessments of, in each department to see like how things are going? Are we making strides there with assessments by each of the subjects? So I know we're changing for the reasons we talked about, but where are we at currently versus, let's say, the prior years? Are our scores, are our individual assessments getting better? Are they getting worse or they?
Well, last year was year one for pre-AP, ELA one and biology. So those students potentially entered AP courses this year or they may be sitting in, in a second sequence. Typically, if you're taking a pre-AP ELA one, for example, you're most likely going to be in AP seminar your sophomore year. So the question you're asking, I'll be able to answer after this year's results come through.
I was meaning in general, the whole English scores, each department. So as we were going through, just as a state of, obviously there was no MCAS, but we have internal assessments.
Sure.
What do those look like as far as, are we moving in the right direction?
We've seen if we're like internally right now, we have A net, right? So we have some A net benchmarks and both in ELA and math, I'm seeing increase. Some places it, it's a modest increase and some places it's a little more. Because when you break out the A net assessments, you're looking at particular standards that are tethered to, you know, like layers of learning. So we are seeing positive movement there. When we talk about our AP scores, you know, at the end of the chain for, for kids, we were continuing to see growth, particularly when you look at AP seminar and AP research. Those are two very, very strong early forays into the program, let's say, where, where, where testing the national average. And actually, it was, I think it was last year that folks, the superintendent and others came down from Worcester to hear from our AP seminars as to what it is we're doing to have a, a success rate north of eighty percent on the test. So, so they, they were tapping into that and, and I, I think they listened to the advice. So what I'm, what I'm going to see is that over time, we're going to have more students in AP classes sooner. Now, when we look at outcomes for students, you know, kids from Fall River are in competition with the world when they apply to colleges, right? And the more successful AP courses they have on their academic resume translates to a better chance at getting into these competitive schools. Historically, right now, it's something we have to work on. Our SAT scores kind of lag behind the average. But our AP results for kids are, are, are competitive, right? Going through the process of college application right now with my student at home, sitting in seminars and admission seminars, you know, they're giving us concrete examples of profiles of students that are being admitted into competitive programs and showing their resumes and calling them very strong. And I'm looking at them and saying, our kids' resumes are stronger because they're taking more AP courses than your typical districts. And not just taking them, but succeeding on the test. So, so I think that this is something, not only we have to figure out the, the issue with SAT in general for us, although who knows what's going to happen there because things are changing. But, but for the AP program itself, it does tie straight to predicting success in college. And it's money in the kid's pocket if they, if they pass the test and, and the school they're going to accepts it.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, everything you're saying. Just, I think we've, we've been behind because of the COVID and not having data to present, but I know you guys have data. You guys are looking at things to see if things are progressing in a positive fashion or a negative fashion. All I'm asking is that we share some of that with us because I'm curious to see where we're going, you know? Having been identified as an underperforming school, I think things are going in the right direction, but the data will kind of either tell us yes, no, or we need to do something drastically different.
Absolutely. We need the results, right? We can say, feels good.
That's what I'm saying. I know we don't have MCAS, but I'm just suggesting that if we get something, I'd be curious. My last comment is about the credit recovery. I know from being here a couple of years ago that we were adding the credit recovery so that we don't have students that are falling way behind and needing to automatically go to the alternative school, trying to keep them in the, the main school. And I think you said that you're going to try to build those supports within the classes. But what would happen if it doesn't? Like are we, are we, by not having those options, are we now eliminating, are, are we going to be sending more kids to the alternative school automatically by that?
No.
Or not?
I, I don't think so. I think that we'll always have a need and an opportunity for students for, you know, let's, let's kind of go through the continuum. Students struggling in class, the data tells the teacher to intervene in these specific places and hopefully the right moves has the kid be successful. Now, when this student doesn't do well on a unit of, of study, I want to get in there and fix it. And so the idea about recovering units in closer to real time rather than waiting for summer school or some kind of credit recovery, saying that and knowing that the reality is at some point students will, will unfortunately fail a class and will need to recover, either be taking it over by way of summer school and then we'll need to expand our offerings. And what, what I'm going to suggest is as we enter a new school, we, we redesign some things. And one of the things that I'd want to have available for students is more supports after the regular school day. Okay, now knowing that the world opens up and kids go to work and kids play sports and everything else. But I think that if we had opportunities for students, particularly now that we've innovated the online world and we're getting good at that, I think there are different ways to still keep the kid in that mode of recovering credit when they need to, but without disrupting, you know, the program of studies or the offerings that we have. Because I think the more that we schedule for these kinds of courses, we're taking away from opportunities at the core to either keep class sizes a little lower or to have more targeted interventions for kids.
Yeah, I don't disagree. My concern was just that, I know in the past we talked about overage, undercredited kids. Let's say they come to the high school, they need to take the regular stuff, but also have some other options for, it sounds like you're saying there will still be those options. But what I was concerned about is if we take it out totally, like at some point, there has to be some sort of recognition that there'll be opportunities for kids to do a credit recovery class to add annuity or something ahead of, after school, whatever it is. I think you have a plan for it, but when you said it's eliminated, basically all credit recovery is eliminated from the, from the studies. I don't know if that's.
I think that what you said was support was going to happen.
I think I, the way I see it is we're offering it as more of a service and support rather than a course. You know, so you failed English one, okay, we need to help you and you need that credit to graduate. And here are menus of options that you could engage in to, to get there, you know?
Where would those be would be my question. That's all. Is it, is there a section like in guidance that says on an individual basis, we're going to work with, you know, or something? Some recognition of where would that happen?
Okay, so soon I'm going to be coming to you with, with some ideas about redesign. And, and in there you, you'll see what I'm talking about. I, I, again, I don't, if we plan for failure in a program of studies, then that safety valve is going to be right in people's faces. And, and perhaps it's a little bit of a demotivating factor for some kids knowing that, well, if I fail it, there's that course I can take right there to, to replace it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, you know my concern. I just, and I think you're saying the same thing as I am hearing you. And that's basically what you said last year. We would do different options and all that stuff. I just, when you said it was just eliminated, that would be my only concern. But I'm sure as more things come forward, we'll be able to judge. So I think you did a nice presentation. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, I do have a couple more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Damaris, when you were in your opening statements about the program of studies in general, one of your statements was you've designed pathways to help get kids there. Expose on that.
So it, I was, part of what I was referring to would be the pre-AP pathway, right? So we want to get students to the, the highest level that they can before they graduate from this, right? And so by retooling our honors program to embed the AP skills, we're going to have more students in AP classes, not only more students in classes, but more successful. And I, when we talk about how we lay out the program of studies, you know, some of it was designed to, to not be inclusive, okay? If you noticed, it, there's not a, a section that says special education, okay? Because special education is a service provided to students and their IEP would place them in a specialized setting to receive the curriculum that's expected in, say, every English class, right? So, so that's what I meant when I talked about pathways to success for students.
As far as CTE, can I ask Mr. Maderas? Oh, no, basically, let me ask the principal. Mr. Damaris, as far as CTE programming, we have really great amount of pathways in that overall umbrella right now that have been developed through the years. I'm very pleased to see that because I think it befits our demographic population here in Fall River very well and that we can turn kids onto real life skills so they could achieve some success after high school. So important. Do you see room, given our brand new high school facility and the amount of programs that are in CTE overall, is there still room for growth and adaptation into the future as maybe possibly some new trends open up?
I think that, you know, we're always looking to be responsive to the labor market and, and to new trends. I think we have a very solid foundation to build on right now with, with several of the programs being new and some of them almost embryonic. When you talk about marketing and we'd really like to see the engineering pathway really get bolstered too. The opportunity, immediate opportunity for growth that I see is to expand Durfee's operations from a six to eight hour day to more of a twelve hour day or more by way of the CTE After Dark. And right now we're piloting it with a couple of shops, but I think it's, over time, we're going to mushroom that out to include culinary and nursing and childcare and, and basically all of our offerings. So that.
That's really helping a kid to like, that's hands-on, that's like experience. That's stuff that they could add to their resume. That's stuff that they could say, hey, job world, I'm ready for you. That's the kind of stuff I'm talking about moving forward, especially with the new school opening up. Really excited about it.
And taking that concept, the way you're talking about hands-on, I want to push that across departments. More project-based learning for everyone in all content so that there's synthesis going on and applicability to real world scenarios. That's where the learning sticks.
Absolutely. So it's along that line and Project Lead the Way. If I could ask, well, I know Jen, you had some, so you had an extraction today. Is Project Lead the Way, I, I've seen the, the middle school programs and they're very, very exciting to see a seventh and eighth grade kid, you know, doing some of the research work they're doing in their Project Lead the Way classrooms. But I haven't seen the high school program. Is it active at the high school, Jen?
It, it is, but the, I, oh, kids don't know a lot of the biomedical pathways that we have. So part of my work is to expand and give kids in Durfee as many opportunities as possible in the science. So for instance, with the freshmen taking free, if they know they're interested in the meth way, they can jump right in to do one of the Project Lead the Way biomedicals coming up for you. So I'm opening up those doors and.
Wish I could understand that.
Or, you know, more different paths in science and they kind of.
Thank you.
I can just expand on that a little bit. There's, there's two things we're doing to expand students. Kind of transition from middle school to high school to support Project Lead the Way. The first is doing a better job in the eighth grade year, marketing to students about what the different pathways and programs are at Durfee High School. The second is we wanted to run it this year. However, due to the pandemic, we shifted to, to run it next year for the first time. Called a, a STEM discovery pathway. And in that pathway for freshmen, students can explore computer science, environmental sustainability, biomedical and engineering. And they go through a two or three week rotation, getting some information. And then they can choose which pathway that they're most interested in, take the level one course right in freshman year. And that'll give them an opportunity, you know, to continue on in the pathway as they move towards graduation.
Thank you, Drew. That was great. Thank you, Jen. Very exciting, Mr. Damaris. You know, I think the future looks great for Durfee High School. Very excited about it. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. So I'm going to tell them alone, you want to join us?
Yeah, I just, I want to add two things. One, to, let's hope you remember Aggie's point. In a future meeting, there will be more discussion about alternative pathways and pathways in general and work that we're doing to get at so that every kid graduates through this model. We think differently about credit recovery and more about competencies and meeting the requirements to standards. So we're, we're going to have that discussion probably within the next few, next two months. Also, as this budget season, there will be another place where you will hear specific investments that we want to make, both at Durfee and at RPA and at the middle level, getting at the CVTE. You talked about growth. As you know, when we designed the building, in twenty sixteen, we only had five vocational programs. But now we have nine. When we designed the high school, we could only build it per the MSBA guidance, guidelines. It can only be designed by how many programs we actually have approved. So that's why we got, we got four approved in a short period of time. We have nine. What we are looking to do, as Matt said, some of these programs are going to take off because they are so new in terms of what, you know, what is the future of. Uh, what we are looking to do, as Matt said, some of these programs are going to take off because they are so new in terms of, uh, what, you know, what is the future of marketing? It may not need the space that it currently has, so that could be done different, right? But what we're looking at is pushing down CBTE. So in last year's budget, we really brought forward the rollout of the construction craft program at Talbot. Coming back at the committee with that this year, given that there's likely some money from the Student Opportunity Act. And, and, and that is an example. Another one that we also, as Matt mentioned, is look at the hours. So if we look at Derby, it's no longer a, you know, eight hour day operation, but you look at it like 12 to 16 hour day operation, if you will. Uh, you know, we want to do second shift with, with, uh, our most popular program, which is the, uh, um, cosmetology. We can only serve, I think, 30 kids at once because of the, uh, numbers. But if we could add a second shift, there's 60 kids. Now, these are examples of how we're going to continue to grow. And what Matt mentioned about the SAT schools being lower, uh, what we're really trying to figure out is how do we improve the achievement of the bottom 25% of all kids? Right? So our AP scores are great. We're doing great work there. But we are pushing more and more kids to get the SAT scores. So if these kids haven't had rigorous experiences or perhaps there's gaps in learning or needs. How do we make sure that, that, that ninth and 10th grade? And then the push in the 11th grade really gets those kids prepared, uh, and ready. So we're going to have more discussions. This is the first one on program of study. Uh, we have a timeline upstairs, budget hearing on the 22nd, subcommittee meeting set up, uh, and more information. So we plan to send, share a lot of, uh, information with the committee, uh, as we continue to move forward. And I agree with you, I think the team at Derby, uh, is focused on the right work. Uh, I, I think there's been definitely, um, a shift. It's, it's palpable in terms of us really talking about what's important there, that equity piece to make sure that we have access for all kids. And we're pushing, uh, a rigorous curriculum, uh, and really trying to also be creative and have fun with the, uh, content stuff that we do. So I think it's going to be a, uh, a, 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 a great transition year as we go in the new building. Uh, and we'll continue to share information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. Mr. Damaris, thank you.
One more question.
Sure.
Just a, a question on, um, the pre AP question again. So at Derby High, would there only be two, two levels? So you're either in pre AP or in college prep? That's it? Is that accurate or?
Well, there's AP, right? So it's AP.
I mean, like I, I was looking at nine, 10, you know, like, uh, ninth graders, 10th graders. The choices of pre AP or college prep.
And so with an asterisk, right, in that not all contents are tethered to an AP test, for example. So, so it might be honors. You might say you see honors Portuguese, for example, because there's no AP Portuguese.
Right. So at the same time, it's honors and that, and that question will be honors or college prep?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Igo.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Thank you, Mr. Damaris. I want to thank you and all of your department heads. Um, you know, over the years, seen many iterations of the programs of studies. And so, um, I want to thank your department heads for always thinking about what the needs are of the students. Um, changing with the times, if you will, um, you know, thinking ahead of, of what interests are out there and trying to draw more students into it. I like the focus, um, you know, the credit recovery piece, you know, I am concerned about those students, but you're right. Things we advertise that coming through the door, you can choose a class, you know, almost immediately. Um, you know, indicates we're more focused on your stumblings than we are about, you know, where we want you, uh, where we want those students to be. So, um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your department heads for staying with us. I know it's been a long day, uh, for all of you, uh, so, but thank you. Um, I'll entertain a motion to refer the BMC Derby High School 2021, 2022 program of studies. To the full committee. Made by Mr. Corey, seconded by Mr. Agia. Do you have any further discussion? Here are none. Roll call vote, um, secretary.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Motion's unapproved and forwarded. Thank you all. The second topic of discussion for today's agenda is the reproductive health curriculum.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Um, I think before I talk about the proposal that I'm going to bring to work, I think it's important to kind of frame it and rare how I got here. So, uh, previous to my coming on board, which was five years ago, we had nurses that were health educators that used to go to the schools and do the puberty lessons and talk about body changes. And that was when we had the small neighborhood schools. And then the bigger schools were built and some of the positions were cut and they were no longer going out to the school. And in that timeframe after that, um, nobody could think of really saying what timeframe. It was that we were no longer going to do any puberty lessons or any type of reproductive health in the middle level or at the elementary school. So when I came on board, which was, uh, five years ago, my first year, when I came here, um, at Derby, we had a health one and a health two program. And in that program, uh, we had, they taught reproductive health. And then at the custom Morton, they had their own resources. They still had a health program that they kind of pieced together. Um, but they did not teach reproductive health. So, um, my first year here, we were able to, uh, through Dr. Malone had put me in charge of making sure that we put the life skills, um, health program into the middle school. And that was when the state was requiring all schools to have a, um, substance prevention program. But it was great because now we could take all those pieces of the health program and meld them together. So at that point, we trained all the teachers and we rolled that out the second year. Um, in that second year, I was awarded a grant through South Coast and I wrote that grant to bring health to grades three and five. At that time, we bought the materials and did the train the trainer model and trained the teachers to teach health. So at that point, we piloted that at Materno and Tansy and we trained all our PE teachers. And that fourth year, um, all elementary teachers were teaching health from three to eight. Uh, Fondica does have a wellness teacher and Henry Lloyd does have a K to eight health teacher. So here we are in the fifth year. So last year I had hoped to come forward, but of course COVID interrupted those plans. So agreeing forth to you, the proposal of reproductive health lessons in grade six to eight and puberty lessons in grade five for the 2021, 22 school year. Providing an evidence based sexual health education that can improve academic success, prevent dating violence and bullying. Help you to develop healthy relationships, delay sexual orientation and reduce unplanned pregnancy, HIV and other STIs. And reduce sexual health disparities among our LGBTQ, uh, view. So I think you have the, a document in front of you. Um, I had given you the information about the program that I was putting out. I did go through four different programs and vetted those out. Part of my, um, association in the state is with, uh, about 75 wellness directors in the state and we meet, um, weekly and monthly. And we talked about the different, um, you know, curriculums. So I was able to get a lot of data from the other districts to find out what was working, what wasn't. Um, the curriculums that we looked at were respect and responsibility. And we looked at, uh, the great body. And then now this one that I'm bringing forth, which is our Get Real program. Uh, Get Real program is a three year middle school curriculum. It's for grades six to eight.
What was that again?
It's a Get Real program.
Get Real?
Yep. Um, and it is, uh, a three year and it's nine lessons per year. It's 30 to 45 minutes. So it could be able to be added into our health curriculum, uh, seven hours of instruction each year and it's 27 lessons over three years. And I talked about that it would go into the curriculum there. Talked a little bit about what that cost would be to buy the kits for the, the teachers. Honestly, the most important piece, and I don't have a, um, a quote for that, I'm waiting for that, um, is the training. This is such an important piece that I really want to make sure that our teachers are prepared and ready to teach us. I don't want to leave them out hanging and not have that support to make sure that they feel comfortable delivering the curriculum. Um, in saying that, we talk about having a comprehensive, um, program. And a program would be age appropriate, medically accurate information on a broad set of topics related to sexuality, including human development. Relationships, decision making, conception and also disease prevention. Part of that that's not listed in the comprehension and what this program brings, but it also talks about sexual orientation, gender identity, social racial. Uh, trauma and porn, reproductive justice and long term consequences of stigma, discrimination. Medical technology and the emergence of digital technology as a growing impact of social and sexual explicit, um, media on relationships. So as you had talked about earlier, kind of changing with the times, kind of what we're doing with our health program at the high school. We're looking at what are the, what is it that we need these kids to learn and have those skills that they can be successful in life? What is it that we want them to leave us with? And so with this program here, the average age of children that are having, um, that are going to puberty. For girls, it's nine to 12, so puts about the 10th is the average age. And for boys, it's nine to 14, and that's in our fifth grade. So it, I feel it's very, very important that students have this information so that they can make the best choices for themselves and be healthy and be in healthy relationships and be able to understand and recognize what isn't a healthy relationship and how that all impacts, uh, their growth. And that brings to the second part of this is a crockery gamble, but this is a very popular program that's used in a lot of schools. It is the puberty lesson. It's designed just for fifth grade. It's three days of puberty lesson. Uh, it would be taught by the, uh, health and disease teachers. It does have, um, four modules. One is growth and development of puberty. Girls and boys reproductive system, uh, stay confident and healthy and in healthy relationships. And that builds into what we already teach in our, uh, curriculum for our life skills. We already talked about making decisions, media influences, coping with anxiety, coping with anger, communication skills. Social skills, assertiveness and resolve in conflict. So it's an easy seamless blend in. I don't want to make it, oh, this is this type like very, you know, out there. I want it to be natural and that people feel comfortable. And we also want to make sure that it's inclusive and that everybody feels part of the conversation and not left out because, well, that's not me. Or I don't recognize that. So, um, this is why I came forward. Um, and I'm hoping that we may be able, like, start the conversation to start to look at how we can have a program that would, um, meet the needs of our students.
Thank you. Any questions, Kelly? Corey?
I do. Uh, as far as any of this is concerned, Michelle, um, family, is there a family? Um, I mean, are all families going to be apprised that their, their young child is going to be studying such material?
Yes, the, um, the program for Get Real at every single, uh, unit is a letter that goes home with the parents to tell them exactly what the units are and what they're going to be talking about. A big piece of what I liked about the Get Real, and a lot of parents don't have that comfort level to have these conversations with their children. Or it just, it just doesn't go as well as they would hope. So with this year, we always recognize that the first educator of our children are the parents. And so in doing that, we don't want to take their role out because they are the most important role. Where we want to be able to support them so they can have these conversations with their children.
Do these curriculums, um, does this curriculum invite parents into the classroom perhaps for a presentation or project or assembly or whatever?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because I have down here that one of the things that we talked about and that I feel is very important is having parents at, uh, sexual educated workshops, the nights and days preventing the curriculum, uh, to the family. So I think that leading off with workshops and being able to, uh, bring that information out is very important. Because I think as soon as people hear that word, it's like, oh, they're going to, you know, what is that? You know, what are they doing there? And I want everybody, it's nothing to hide. It's nothing. It's, I want it to be as natural as possible and that people feel comfortable. Now, in saying that, there is a state law that of course gives the permission for parents, and you have also a policy here in Royal River. That if a parent wants to opt their child out, they can opt their child out. What we do in the high school is, we had in the past, and it's one of the, the policies that we have in place. And I was hoping down the road we might kind of be able to amend it. Is that we have, um, a letters that we send out to the parents. But what happens is, is that the policy reads that we have to get a signature to get it back. And if we don't get it back and the child doesn't participate, well, sometimes the kids get together and kind of plot out that they're not going to get it signed. And they're going to be in a study hall together and whatnot. And we end up with a large group of students that really need to be there. But because, you know, somebody at home wasn't able to sign it or whatnot, we weren't able to have them there. So we more would rather have, sign home the letter as we always do, have parents sign off on it. But if we don't get anything back, just like when we do surveys, we'd send it out. If you don't send anything back, tell them you don't want to participate, then, you know, your child takes the survey. We'd like to do that, the same thing, because it would make it so much easier and for the students that, you know, need to find somebody to sign off on it. And the understanding of that. And then also so that we make sure that all the children that should be in there are there, you know, so.
Let me ask you, just person to person, all the research aside, do you feel comfortable forwarding? You know, this type of curriculum, especially like the fifth graders, third graders, fourth graders?
Yes, I do. I would, um, be very comfortable with that.
Could we at some point in the future visit a classroom where it's being taught or discussed?
Absolutely.
Is that being done now?
Uh, no, because it's that, well, it's only at the high school. So the first time they have any reproductive health is in ninth grade. And by then we are way beyond like with puberty, we didn't talk about it. And, you know, we've had, I'll be honest, we've had some students that didn't understand what was happening to them and be crying and thought they were dying. And I just feel that that's really important that they understand about, you know, body changes and, and it's normal and it's, it's okay. And they're not in, you know, hurt.
Yeah, identity, I, I mean, identity is a huge part of the growth and development of, of our psyches anyway, you know. So I know that, that there's a lot of issues surrounding that as a child grows and develops. Uh, the nature of this is really, it's really sound because our social media controls so much of their, you know, their ignorance. And, and their, their false point of view as they try to develop through it. Uh, so this is, it's important to have a counterpunch and a healthy one at that. I want to make sure, um, that families, moms and dads really have a strong handle on what's going on. Because it is discussions of a sensitive nature, you know. And I know that I'd, I'd want my own child to be as protected as possible as they grow and develop.
Absolutely. I have a daughter who's in the fifth grade, so she's right at that age. And so, uh, the school does have a program where they do take the boys and the girls and they have that, that puberty talk. But I got, I got ahead of the game because I had all the resources, so I was ready. But a lot of parents don't have that and they don't have that comfort level and it is a sensitive subject. And especially if there's a student that's kind of struggling with where they fit into that. Where, where do they identify? Where is their comfort level?
Yes.
And so I think there's, you know, a lot of times when they would talk about different, uh, issue with sexuality, the kids are left out. And they felt like, this doesn't apply to me and nobody understands me. So that further isolates them from the conversation. And then for some of them, I want them to hear about a normal act, if, you know, what it is about having a, a healthy sexual, um, outlook on life. Because I don't want them to think that what they're doing is wrong or that they don't belong and that, that it's fine. You know, that they are who they are and that they identify as they do. And I think that it's important that we make sure we're using, uh, the right language and that we're being sensitive and inclusive with all our students. But I would agree. I would understand that my daughter, when she had that program, I wanted to know about it. I wanted to know what was in it. Um, when we did, we rolled out the substance prevention program, there were people that were concerned about that. Um, and we had people that came to school and I was able to give them a spoken sequence, just like I gave you for this one here. It tells every unit what's being taught and parents would have access to that, no problem.
Will this, will this take root, uh, in September?
I would like that, but I'm bringing that to you first as a discussion piece.
So we're coming here and we're asking, do you, we're asking, would you refer this? Or should we go and have a lot of discussion with everyone in the committee first since this is a curriculum methodology? So.
This is the first step.
So I.
Great, okay.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
As you know, I've been talking about this for years. When I got here, because I didn't understand why we weren't doing what every other school system in Massachusetts was doing on this very important subject. So, um, when, when, when last year, we were going to come forward to the committee, we were planning.
Yes, we had it all set.
Boom. And, you know, we went to, uh, COVID lockdown. This is very important shift for us. So, um, I would have, I would have, the plan was we're going to get it off the ground last year. We didn't. So we're coming to the, to the subcommittee first to share what are the programs. And then look at some point to get to the full committee approval to, uh, to, uh, adopt and purchase the materials that we need to.
And we had three curriculums that were, you know, the top three that we had. So I could, uh, certainly give you links and so that you could see the other two curriculums to see the difference between and how we kind of vetted that out.
I trust, I trust your vetting process. I know what programs like this generally look like. I know what these curriculums are. You know, they're, they're developed by consultants and experts in the field. I understand that. I trust your vetting process. I'm, I'm getting more into the, uh, the explicit nature of the curriculum itself. And how it may affect a third grader or a fifth grader and their, and their family discussions. Kids that age don't really know how to discuss things very well. They, they, they process information still. But they're not really, I don't know if this is going to get them to maybe more openly discuss. to maybe more openly discuss situations, I don't know. But I'd be very curious to look at that.
And of wanting to have that health curriculum at the middle, at the elementary school because of that. Because when we have that health curriculum, we're talking about relationships, we're talking about communication. How do you, you know, have a conversation with somebody? What are you doing? You're angry. What are you, what are you doing? You're stressed out. You know, how do you handle your emotions? And now, in this day and age of what's happening, it gives me that even more than they ever did, that SEL piece about that wraparound service for those students. So I definitely, um, I, I hear exactly what you're saying because that, you know, is always a concern. You know, it's what, how a kid gonna take that? And that's why that training for the teachers needs to be what it, you know, needs to be very specific because this is a sensitive subject. It's the same thing when we taught the, um, we're teaching the health curriculum. We talk about subject views, that triggers some students, you know, that's upsetting to some students. So we've already got a plan in place. We start to see a student reacting, or we have that background information, what's the student, we may, you know, decide that maybe this isn't the lesson that the student needs to be in. You know, maybe it's a conversation we have to buy into or whatnot. Um, or we have somebody right on, you know, ready to go, um, if that person needs support. So that's important.
What I'd like to see, uh, uh, Mr. Superintendent, is if there's any data from these type of curriculums, uh, in, in other districts throughout our Commonwealth, then I wouldn't mind seeing what, what their reactions are to these curriculums like anything that's going on elsewhere in the state.
I can provide that for you.
Yeah, we could do that and put the links in and we'll, I'll send, I'll include that in my email on a Friday. It doesn't have to be this Friday, but.
Yep, I think that that, we, we keep a document where everybody puts in their programming and how it, you know, is going and that's how, uh, I was able to get a lot of support to find the different programs. I wanted to make sure it was appropriate.
Yeah, 'cause we deal with different cultural pockets and different pockets of the state, you know? So I mean, there, there's a lot of cultural issues that'll be discussed as well, you know? And wanna make sure that we're taking a step in the right direction. I think we are. I think it will develop a child's cognitive abilities to, uh, fight off, uh, the temptations of pop culture around them because pop culture is an incredibly strong force in, in a child's life. And they need to be able to balance that with some cognition. So hopefully, we're heading in the right direction. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Zagia, so, uh, just, uh, I'm not sure if I missed it, but you're reading from a paper, but is there a summary of what you were to go along with this or was it just, uh? So I got this one?
Yes, you have that one.
And like a thirty-seven page thing?
Yep, and then I have, um, I also brought with me, just so you would have it. I think you already have that one and this one. This is the organization of the, one of the programs, you can see how it is set up and how it's to be taught. Um, I do have a, I wanted to make it, I didn't wanna overload you too much, but I can certainly give you the write-up that I have from that. This here is just for me for bullet points to make sure there are.
The only thing I would suggest to you, to everybody, when we get presented something, knowing the history, the background in a sort of, I always like to say, a one pager is always helpful to know the background of why it's coming before us. I think you both explained some of that, but it comes in a one pager. So when it comes to the full committee, it would make more sense if everybody knew going in where this is coming from rather than having to hear it for the first time, just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
My other thought was, what are the current, so this is for middle school?
Middle school and the fifth grade program for puberty.
Yeah, so what do the middle school principals say? Have they been apprised of this? Are they on board with it? Um, have they been talked to?
Uh, I've had, I will not say that I've had conversations with them as a whole. I've had individual conversations, um, not as a, a whole middle school group. Um, it is something that, uh, I can tell you that the teachers are, are, are kind of swirled around a lot because the kids are asking a lot of questions and they're kind of dancing because they know they're not supposed to be discussing this. So it gets a little awkward in that regard. I've had some, um, some principals ask me, you gonna do that puberty lesson? You know, is somebody gonna come in? You know, we're gonna, you know, talk to the kids, so. Um, but as a whole group of, of calling them, uh, no.
Yeah, and this is another suggestion I would make before it comes to the full committee. I think it's important, everything you said, I think it needs to go to the full committee for a, a larger discussion. But I for one would like to hear what the principal, the people that are in the buildings that are gonna be running this program, other programs, what they currently have, you know?
Yes.
I think getting the buy-in from those folks, to me, makes a lot of sense when I vote to say.
Absolutely.
You know, they're on board, yeah, we agree, this is the good, you know, it just makes it a lot smoother that this is the way we're going rather than just wondering, so if you can.
No, and, and I agree with that because if you don't have that buy-in, then it's not done with fidelity and so it's, then you're not really doing it.
Or who's gonna do it? Like, there's always, like, now at a school, it's exactly the same, so.
Exactly.
What teacher's gonna do it? Who's gonna, you know, so there was some questions that, the nuts and bolts that they have that we don't necessarily know. And I just wanna get to the point.
Miss Zagia, what we could put together is both teachers and administrators at the, at the middle level in the fifth grade about, um, their understanding of it, what their feelings are in terms of want and need and then the nuts and bolts of how they operate. We'll get something together and we'll have all that prior to a larger discussion for all the members.
Yeah, thank you, I think it makes sense, so. With that, there you go, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Zagia. Thank you, Miss Chopp. Uh, you know, I, I will say just a couple things. One, you know, the policy referenced earlier, um, although I can see how it may hinder students participation, I'm also a big proponent of parent approval.
Oh, yes, we, I, I.
I could tell you that, you know, and, and I, you know, heard you a lot in the class and I respect, you know, your thoughts about the committee revisiting, changing the policy. And that may come before us, but I can tell you I won't support that. I didn't support it when it came before us, when we adopted the policy many years ago. Um, I think I'm a pretty open-minded person. I have three children, well, well, a twenty-two-year-old, so I don't consider her a child. A sixteen-year-old, a fifteen-year-old, so I've been through these, the stage or these stages. They're not difficult, I mean, excuse me, they're not easy, they're very difficult. Um, but I also felt as a parent that I should have some say in my son or daughter's exposure to these conversations. And so I think that's where the policy connects with parents. You know, I, I could see it cutting the other way. You know, you mentioned that kids get together and they don't bring them home so they can go into a cafeteria or a study. Well, I can also see kids getting put in the class and taught about this and discussing it at the dinner table or around the house and having parents saying, hey, wait a minute, where'd that parental slip go? Where, where, how did I miss that one? And so I think you can cut both ways. So, um, this is a, a, a topic that, um, you know, I think is long overdue in our schools 'cause I think many of our students don't have the adults in their lives to talk to about, you know, this very scary time in their lives where their bodies change and they're not really sure why and they're not in control of it. Um, but I also think that, that, you know, parents need to be, or guardians need to be a part of that decision for various reasons, whether it's cultural, whether it's religious. There've been, there, there're gonna be all types of reasons why parents are gonna wanna say, yes, please have these conversations in this curriculum, you know, discussions with my son or daughter or no, I'm, I'm not interested in, in them participating. So, um, I'd be willing to hear more a, about it, but, you know, that was just my thought off the top of my head. I, you know, and again, I, I'm one who considers myself pretty open when it comes to sexuality and, uh, acceptance of, of people's, uh, gender identities and how they identify themselves. And, um, I just think that, um, that may differ from, from the general public and, and parents. And I want them to feel comfortable before they sign off and have their sons or daughters participate in, in this curriculum.
I can understand that. We, um, we talked about that a lot and we did, um, come up with like kind of a, a foe, what it would look like, you know, how we would explain it. And basically it was that you would have to, um, either send back the, the, um, slip or you would be either to an email, a call, you know, and they would be exact to, we didn't have a child or we didn't have.
Right, 'cause I think just today in age, I mean, actually, these backpack forms that, you know, those are sort of non-existent for most, I mean, it's a, an email that we correspond with or someone that we're communicating or somewhere online. So, you know, I would support that type of change.
Yeah, that's kind of what we wanted to do.
To simply, well, we gave it to you and we didn't get it back, so we just taught it anyway.
I'm sorry if I gave that impression.
No, 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 it just, it just, to me, sounded like, you know, there's an opportunity for students to play it the other way. My mother and father never signed this, so I'm not bringing it home. And then now they're taught the information, they go back and talk about it. Parents say, where's that form? And so, I don't know, I didn't get one.
And I think you're gonna see more of that at the high school level where at the, at the middle school, you know, they're gonna know, okay, they have health and this is, you know, this letter came home. And so there's gonna be that, that closer connection where at the high school, we have numerous classes coming through, so there's more of that gray area there.
And I think sometimes these conversations taking place in classrooms like that, uh, you know, where, where, you know, this can be a very, um, silly time for kids to hear words they're not accustomed to hearing and, and that discussion. And, and so to feel comfortable to be able to do that in that setting, you know, has some advantages as well. But, um, the other piece that I have, and maybe it just needs further discussion, I don't know that I would even ask for a motion or refer at this point because I think there's still some information that's needed. But particularly the piece that Miss Zagia mentioned about the buy-in from the middle school principals and how this would fit into their particular school improvement plans. And, and I always hear this competition for time and, you know, I don't have time to do those, those other ancillary types of classes because we're so focused or our plan says we have to improve our test scores in math. And, and so, you know, your teachers feel sometimes that they're up against it to give up that valuable time on learning for the core subjects. And this is just as important, in my opinion. But those are the conversations I hear sometimes from our teachers, that, well, how else do you want us to fit this in? I know it's health, but we also gotta do all these other benchmarks we gotta meet. And so I'd be interested to hear from principals as to how they plan on sort of managing, um, this curriculum and how they plan to roll it out throughout the course of the year. Um, and, and then just, you know, I know you mentioned and referenced some, it sounds like some real in-depth of research on, on programs, but just, you know, cost estimates, you know? If we're gonna purchase it, if we're gonna just, if this is gonna be sort of a train to trainer or if it's gonna be, um, a one-time expenditure where we open the full capacity amongst our own staff? So we don't have to go back and, and sort of, with a reoccurring expense, but just some of those things. I think would be helpful. And then I think, you know, I'd like to see a decision made one way or the other so that we can get it off the ground and running by September. I would wanna see another academic capable body who would not have in some variation, if not the whole curriculum is presented, but at least some of the topics that we've discussed here in our classrooms being taught to our students so that they have a better understanding. Uh, but I, I, I think, I can speak just for myself, not my colleagues, but, you know, I, I think it's all overdue, quite frankly. It sounds like there are other school districts that are far ahead of the curve when it comes to this, this type of education. Um, you know, I think it's, it's something that's very well needed, so, but thank you. All right, Mr. Superintendent Valone and then Mr. Fox.
Oh.
You go, if, if you have some other.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, this is a very sensitive subject and I think that some parents will, um, perceive it as that. I'm just wondering if, uh, if, if it's something that we could have some community forums or meetings where we could invite parents in so that we could kind of, uh, share the information so that parents are comfortable with exactly what is being taught, why it's being taught and how. Uh, because, uh, I think that people hear the word and they think, you know, they, they only isolate one word and they think, oh, they're gonna teach them sex ed, but they're not really, um, comfortable with that, with the subject of the nature, uh, of that nature. So I think that having meetings, communicating with families, being open in different languages and, and making sure that parents are well aware of exactly what it is and why it's important for us to teach it, uh, will kind of break down some of those barriers.
I am thinking, I mean, some families are gonna say, thank you, please, thank you. I'm glad I don't have to have that conversation. And then there're gonna be other families that say, absolutely not. That's a very private conversation and I don't want my son or daughter exposed to those conversations and I don't wanna have that conversation in confines of my home, you know, where that, you know, that, that, uh, safety net, if you will, that relationship with their sons or daughters is there. And so it is something I think we're gonna need to vet a little bit further before we, um, get to a final decision on it. Mr. Superintendent Valone?
I just, a process, uh, point, I just, I would ask the subcommittee, um, would it be appropriate for the subcommittee, um, to further for discussion of a first read with the full committee? Or do you want to, to come back to this group at another time?
I, I'd like it to come back to this group with additional information first and then.
'Cause they could do it either way. So it would make sense then to come back.
Right.
Probably not, it won't happen until sometime in March or April that we would come back with this group and there'll probably be some other items that we have on the instructional subcommittee at that time. And at that point, we would have a whole bunch of other information for the committee.
I just don't wanna rush it.
No, we don't, well, we don't need to rush.
And have it get shot down. Or have it get transferred back here because people have additional questions or information that's needed and we end up back here anyway. I don't, it's not something that I think it needs action here in, in January, early February. I think it's something that we could, uh, Miss Chopp has done her own diligence on this. She's got a lot of information. I think the last piece was, you know, cost projections in terms of how we plan on rolling it out. You know, how principals at the middle school levels and at least fifth grade plan on sort of implementing it into their academic calendars. I, I, I think once we have that information, it sounds like, you know, at that point, um, I think we're in a better position to.
Yeah, so I mean, just something, to me, it was, makes a lot of sense not to go to the full committee now for discussion, or even if it's first read, second read, third read, to come back to this group. But it would be at a time when we have more information, backed up with a couple of the other things that we know we have to share with this committee. So that would be the form to do it. We'll be ready, budget, you know, we're doing the budget presentations, uh, budget presentation, the big one in February twenty-second. We're, we're tight until then, we can share some stuff. It'll probably be March where we can get back with this group.
That's fine. So I just sound like I'm, uh, thought the issue of designing, uh, opt-in, opt-out piece?
Yeah.
I think that one thing you, you should look at is the data around the state and other districts that have been successful because it, we all might feel one way. But if we say, you know, if we do it this way, we get fifty percent of the kids. If, you know, whatever the data shows, it might be a good selling point to say why we should consider it one way or the other. I've never, I wasn't on the committee at the time to take those other votes, but if you give data that says, this is why it's needed here and this is why it's successful under this condition, but if we make them have to sign, the number goes way down. Now it's a value judgment amongst us.
And what we would.
Something like that.
What we would do at, at that time down the road when we had all that information was that would all be part of the school committee's deliberation. So the policy would be part of that and how we do it. And Mark, I think we're all on the same page. We, there's gotta be a permission. It's just how that happens and that's what Kevin's saying.
But there's that data piece that you have to get.
We do this.
And, and I would say too is that I kept the data, um, at the high school level that, um, how many students opted out and how many we had out of the class. And I kept a spreadsheet of that, so I can provide that. Just to give that to high school, but I can at least give that piece of data and then of course, yeah.
And I could tell you the curriculum that we were teaching, that we have been over the years teaching, is nowhere near as in-depth as what I've seen here. And there was already some pushback from parents.
Right.
That didn't want their, their sons or daughters.
Right, and that's a parent, right.
A part of that, a part of that conversation and that curriculum level of this. And so times have changed and, and so we'll see. You know, I, I just wanna recognize the fact that as a parent.
Yes, controversial, I get it.
This is, this is one of those that you're gonna make sure that, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying we have to have a hundred percent buy-in, but we have to have enough buy-in to feel as comfortable in, in making.
And also buy out, so you don't have to do it if that's.
Right. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, it seems like, um, a lot of the group work being done in our schools right now and also in the agencies throughout the city, uh, they're always talking about, you know, the safety of a child and relationship issues. The Katie Brown Foundation, they, they talk about healthy relationships. I know a lot of our adjustment counselors are running groups, especially at the secondary level, where there are a lot of that discussions about healthy relationships and responsibilities. And, um, I've had a lot of, uh, intersecting work with, um, Planned Parenthood here in the city where we had their guests come on in and do, uh, active discussions with our group at the time, uh, especially around, um, around sex and, and, and the practice of it and all of that. It was, it was very, very healthy. There's no doubt in my mind that this is gonna get carried out in a very productive way. But it does, it, it is a sensitive topic, all about the growth and development of a child in, in American society in the twenty-first century again with social media and all of that. And so there's good, there's, I really like the questions that my colleagues have asked today. This was a great presentation on your part, so let's continue to talk. So let's continue to talk about it and and we'll all grow together, you know, and see how this concept unfolds.
Motion table?
I yield.
Sure, there's a motion before the subcommittee to table it. Is there a second?
Second?
Second, a little discussion on the movement table. We'll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
So the item will remain on the table and then at such time that you feel there's enough information, bring back, we'll rip it from the table and continue to, uh, discuss it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll, to bring it forward.
Oh, thank you for your hard work.
The first step is to have that conversation and then.
Yep, and I appreciate all your work. I know you.
Thank you.
Fellow school committee member.
I know that, I know that. She's working really hard.
I know, I just realized I have my bat because I have it on both sides, so I get into the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ending in business to come before the committee, Miss Agia?
Just just a question on, is X two remaining in the district? Are we looking at, to get rid of X two or we?
Well, we are exploring, um, other options for student information, uh, system. We are looking at potentials. It wouldn't be for this year because it's, that's a long, uh, process, but we are exploring, uh, other options.
And is there a rationale for that? Like, what is X two?
Yeah, X two's awful.
Antiquated. It's a, we're having a lot of issues with customer service. Um, and I think that, uh, we're looking at a system that could provide us with, uh, data management, student information, that could bring all those.
Different languages. We've looked at like four different programs as opportunities. We're not, this isn't for next year.
So hold on, we're not going to go too far on this.
No, no, right. We're going to be bringing it forward to the committee as part of the budget process.
So the answer is potentially.
We're exploring.
Yeah, the reason why I brought it up was because I heard about it today and I just was curious if that was happening. That's why I brought it up.
Yep, it's.
Long-term strategy is we would make a shift in in June, July of twenty twenty-two. So we would have X two for the coming year, training rolling out if the committee agrees. And it's a, it's not much of a money issue because it's just one for the other. But X two, when it was sold here, was just, wasn't, it was one thing, it became something else. So there's other products that are much more, um, productive and easy to manage and use.
Well, I've only heard good things about it myself from people that work in the district. I've worked in the district before. I've only had good experience with it. I've also, uh, think that we get a pretty good bargain for what we get with it. So those are my concerns. So as you're looking at other things, money's going to be an issue. What people in the district feel about it, you know, things like that. So just going forward, that was the thing that I'd be concerned about.
We've done, we've been working on, like, just looking and exploring. We've got a pretty diverse, wide-ranging team looking at the options. Um, this one model that is is kind of the leader at this point is in about, I don't know, eighty or ninety-something districts in Massachusetts. Uh, it's been well-received and it's much more functional and, um, what do they call it? And easier to manipulate, uh, and great customer service and training. And that's really what we're missing right now. X two is a beast in terms of, there's no support. And so it's just, it's hard to manage. It was made for a different time and it hasn't progressed.
Yep, I just wanted to raise it. Those are my concerns about it and I'm sure you'll get more info as we go.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Miss Agia. Any other in business? Is there a motion to return?
So moved.
So second.
Second by Miss Corey, um, secretary.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.